Couple of seconds to sync, go ahead.
Chip.
Fact that the neighborhoods that we were applying for make up the Promise Zone does make Hartford more competitive for grants like this. That's why the Promise Zone designation mattered so much. But this grant itself is a grant that is administered by the Federal Department of Education. And the purpose is to try to to bring a place-based strategy that's focused on a particular neighborhood or set of neighborhoods, and focused on creating pathways and support and opportunity for young people in those neighborhoods. In a lot of ways, it is modeled after something that I think many folks in this room are familiar with, which is the Harlem Children's Zone. And the Federal Department of Education and Congress established this program to help other communities replicate that kind of approach, that comprehensive approach that made the Harlem Children's Zone so successful. Now, obviously, every community that does this tailors it in its own way. It's not a one-size-fits-all program. You can't just pick up, you know, a cookie cutter model from the Harlem Children's Zone and drop it somewhere else and have it work. It has to be built, it has to be customized, and most importantly, it has to be done in partnership with the organizations, the stakeholders, the residents, the community where it's being built. What it brings us in terms of resources is $30 million over five years to help build this coordinated network of support for young people. And I'm going to let others talk about detail. But that's the simplest way to think about it, is trying to bring all of the organizations, all the stakeholders, all the providers, all the partners who work in and support this neighborhood to come together and together in a coordinated, comprehensive way say, how do we change the game for kids in this neighborhood? And it's also very individualized. So the idea is to identify what specific things a given child may need, and then try to address those. For some kids, that may mean they need some extra academic support in one area. For other kids, it may mean that they need some behavioral health support. For other kids, it may mean that they have a parent who needs help in battling an addiction, and that's the best way to help that child. But on a tailored basis, individualized basis, to try to coordinate all the providers and deliver the best support that we can for young people in these neighborhoods. Now, I say these neighborhoods, I should have said at the start, we're talking about the neighborhoods that make up the Promise Zone. So we're talking about Northeast, Clay Arsenal, and Upper Albany neighborhoods. In a second, I'm going to hand this over to Courtney Jackson, who many of you know is our Director of the Promise Zone. He works to make sure that we're working in partnership with stakeholders in the Promise Zone. He also works to make sure that we are keeping an eye out for grant opportunities to go after where that Promise Zone designation may help. So in a minute, I'm going to turn this over to him, and then he's going to turn it over to Dr. Paul Dworcan and to Jackalyn, who are from Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Before I do that, I want to say a couple of other things. One, this is still very much in the early stages. So we have won this grant. What comes next, though, is an extensive planning phase where we're working together to make sure that we are building a system in partnership that has the best chance of success. So this really is the very beginning of it. It's not that we're bringing you something that's fully cooked and say, here it is. It's that we're saying, we've got the ingredients now, let's put it all together together. The second thing is, I just want to give you some perspective on sort of how long we've been going after this. This is the third time that we applied for this grant. We failed the first two times, but we kept going after it because we really believe in that model. We believe that that kind of model that worked in Harlem's Children's Zone is exactly the kind of approach that can make a difference here. And I want to give a big shout out and thanks to Thea Montanez, who is our Chief Operating Officer, because she is the one who made sure that we stayed focused on this opportunity and kept going after it and kept refining it. And also the one who had the wisdom to reach out to Connecticut Children's to ask if they could take the lead. And you'll hear a little bit more about why that makes sense, but I'm just going to give you the short version. Number one, they're a world-class institution when it comes to child development. We're really blessed to have an institution like Connecticut Children's in Hartford. And Dr. Dworcan in particular was the lead at Children's for a lot of that developmental work. A lot of that work to do some groundbreaking research in how do you best help support young people and help with their development. So we're lucky to have that partnership. The second piece is that going after that grant was a really intensive process. The application that Dr. Dworcan and Jackalyn and many of the partners who are here and many other partners who are not here put together ran to about 700 pages. So we didn't have the capacity to pull that together internally, and we knew that. And I don't think any one partner would. But we asked Connecticut Children's to help convene folks and take that lead in putting together that application to make sure that we had the best shot at getting it. And really, really grateful to the Connecticut Children's team for the work that they did in quarterbacking that, but building a really good team to do it. Now, lastly, on that team point, and this comes back to what I was saying about the planning work beginning now in a really, in a meaningful way. There are a number of partners who are part of the application process. They're going to be part of the implementing too, but that doesn't mean they're the only ones that are part of it. If you're on Zoom, please mute. And maybe if we've got somebody who is controlling it, oh, there we go. All right, we've got the, we've got the control there. So what it does mean is that those organizations were part of putting the application together. It also means for most of them that they came forward with matching resources. Because one of the things that was important in putting this application together was being able to demonstrate not just that we were ready to receive a bunch of money from the feds, but that we had a bunch of partners that were ready to put up at least an equal amount of investment to match that. And so the application identified $36 million of commitments from local organizations, philanthropic organizations, providers, others, to say, we'll put this up as part of that effort to match the federal dollars. So that's why that group is part of the application. But I want to stress again, that doesn't mean that that's all of the partners who involve in implementation. There will be many more partnerships to be built, many more partners involved, and that's what the next phase is about. I talked longer than I meant to at the start, but again, I want to say thank you to everybody who was part of putting this application together. I want to say thank you to everybody for being here tonight. And I also want to acknowledge that this is not the only one of these meetings that we're going to have. There's going to be a number of public discussions like this about this work as we go forward. And I also want to make an apology, which is that my office screwed up, and I'll take full responsibility for scheduling this on a night when we had a Board of Education meeting. Because I know that there are folks who would like to be at the Board of Education meeting or are at the Board of Education meeting, but would like to be here. Hopefully, they'll be able to watch this meeting online and certainly can reach out to me or any number of members of our team. But again, we'll have lots of opportunity for engagement. But I do feel bad about that because the Hartford Public Schools is inevitably a really important partner and a really important piece of doing this work successfully. And I should add that one of our Board of Education members, Jim Schmerling, is the CEO of Connecticut Children's, which to me makes for a really great opportunity to make sure that there's strong partnership between this effort and the school system as well. So with that, I'm going to sit down. I'm going to turn this over to Courtney Jackson, our Promise Zone Director. Really, really lucky to have Courtney on our team and leading this work. And jump back in later when we get to questions and conversation. Courtney, over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. So, so when we're looking at this grant, we already know what some of the questions are. And one of the first questions is, you know, what is this grant aiming to do? Okay, so we're going to just start off with like, these are the results. This is where we're aiming for. We're looking to get results in entering kids, students entering kindergarten and ready to succeed in school. Students are proficient in math, English, language arts. Students are successful in transition from middle school to high school. Graduate, graduate from high school, obtain secondary degrees, certification, and credentials. And I know everyone can read this, but I'm going to just go through with this piece here. Students are supported by families and communities in their learning. They're healthy. They feel safe at school in their community, live in stable communities, and have access to 21st century learning tools. So when we get into this, we're going to talk a little bit more about the pipeline and give information about our process. How did we get here? I just wanted to say upfront, this is what we're working towards. In our first partner that we looked at, and the mayor again spoke about CCMC being our lead agency. One other piece I wanted to add to that was, when we decided to add CCMC as the lead agency, when we decided to add CCMC as the lead agency, it came from listening to the community. When we go to apply for other grants, one of the biggest issues that happens is we're a small community, and a ton of our partners, they provide the similar services. So whether it's perceived or not, there feels like there's competition. CCMC is not in competition with our providers. So the goal is to have authentic partnerships where we know we're pushing to try to help each and every organization build their capacity and provide services in a better, more efficient way, and be a part of this process that we're really excited about. So. So we'll talk about the proposal development in just a bit. And one of the pieces, again, that we're talking about is it started with community. And not just several months ago when we began this process. It started way back when we're talking about the Promise Zone. And we're having our work group meetings, and we're also going to NRZ meetings. We're also going to parent meetings. And we're hearing information from individuals where they don't want to be told exactly how they're going to be served. They want to be a part of the process. So when we looked at doing this, what we did was, we built the car, but we're not driving it. So moving forward, as the mayor said, there's going to be a ton of conversations like this. And what we're not going to do is just say, you know what, we're going to have these meetings. We're going to look at existing organization that's already connected to community. We're going to look at existing groups that's already sitting down having conversations, and we're going to have real fruitful conversation on how we steer this thing. The United Way is going to help us in that. And when we do that, again, is authentic. And that's something that I was really pushing and that we're pushing as a team. Again, coming back from conversations with individuals, we know who really has boots on the ground. We know who really has, already has authentic relationships with the community. It's not for us to go and bring someone out from New York or just some random place and say, jump right in. We want to take those existing relationships and build upon them. And that's really the starting point of this, of this grant. As the mayor said, for the next, you know, twelve to eighteen months, we're going to figure this thing out. And what we did, again, with the process is, we built the car. There's going to be an Ascend Pipeline where individuals can gain access to programs and services, whether that's in school, here at Parker, other places. We want to make it as easy as possible. But what we're not going to do is tell people how they're going to be served and who's going to serve them. So with that being said, I think, let me see on my notes here, any other things that I really want to touch on. We also, when we were writing this, we also had community members at the table as well. Again, not as full-fledged as we expect to be for the next twelve to eighteen months because this process, it was a quick turnaround. This is, again, the third time we've applied. And happy to say, we were the number one, we submitted the number one grant proposal. So we're super excited about that. So I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Dwarken here, and he's going to discuss the role of Connecticut Children in this process.
Thanks, Courtney. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. I tell you, sitting up here and looking out over this audience, it is both humbling and a little bit intimidating to see the turnout. But we're so, so pleased with the level of interest and engagement, and it will be critical to our success. So I'm going to go off script for just a moment because yesterday, I'm a member of the board of an organization in Greenville, South Carolina, called the Institute for Child Success. And there was a virtual board meeting yesterday. And at that board meeting, they unveiled a new initiative that they were leading in neighboring Spartanburg, South Carolina, which is a city that also has many challenges. And this is an initiative that's focused on young children and ensuring that young children and their families are connected to a wide array of family-supporting services. Sound familiar? It's the same idea. A comprehensive, integrated approach to making sure that children and families are connected to programs and services to address their priorities and needs. And it was really impressive, and I must say validating, to hear them describe an initiative that is embedding so many of the critical concepts that are part of our Promise Neighborhoods effort. Theirs is not federally funded, it's locally funded, but it's very impressive. And one speaker, in talking about that initiative, offered an observation that I thought I just couldn't improve upon in sharing with you this evening. So the point of this convening certainly is to get your guidance, your input, your advice. And we will continue to do that throughout this process for the reasons that Courtney and the mayor emphasized. But the real reason for this meeting is to begin to build trust. That's the real reason for this meeting. And the speaker's quote yesterday from Stephen Covey, whom some of you may be familiar with, is, "These things move at the speed of trust." And when I heard that, I realized that directly applies to this work that we are trying to do together. So hopefully, this is the first of many steps in which we build trust and afford ourselves the opportunity to work together. It's the only way that we're going to be successful, and we know that. So the mayor mentioned that Thea had reached out and asked if we would be willing to take the lead on this grant proposal. And as I mentioned at the press conference, I kind of immediately said yes, without really even thinking about the answer that I was giving. And I said yes mainly for three reasons. Number one, when many of you think about Connecticut Children's, since we're a hospital, you probably first and foremost think about the clinical care that we deliver, and that's totally appropriate. I, previous to my current position, spent fifteen years as physician-in-chief there and was responsible for the quality of the clinical care that we delivered. But in fact, we also need to be viewed as a critical community resource in many respects, and as an anchor institution that you can depend on. This work is consistent with our desire to be a critical community resource. Secondly, about ten years ago, we formed an Office for Community Child Health to try to support our many community-oriented programs. Currently, as we speak, we have eighteen community-oriented programs within this office. And we built a kind of lean and mean infrastructure to strengthen the work of these programs. We recognize that with this grant, we had the opportunity to leverage those programs and bring them to scale and impact to support the families in the neighborhoods that comprise the Promise Neighborhoods Grant, our Promise Zone neighborhoods. And then third, we've been at this for a while. We've been working for decades at building systems to strengthen families, to support their capacity, to promote their children's optimal health development and well-being. We've learned a lot, and our work has brought us to Hartford, to the state of Connecticut, and across the country. We're working in well over thirty states right now. Obviously, our primary commitment is to hear. And we were eager to bring those lessons learned to bear in putting this proposal together. And in fact, we were successful. And as Courtney mentioned, we just, there were only seven grants that were funded across the country. In any given grant cycle, there are anywhere from zero to a half a dozen. So we were very fortunate. We realized the odds were pretty slim from the standpoint of the numbers game. But the grant, as we learned just today, I didn't know this before today, we actually received the highest score of any of the grants that were submitted and any of the grants that were funded, which is a tribute to all of our partners who supported this. So we have come to appreciate that we must plan this with you. You know what your priorities are, you know what the needs of the neighborhoods are, you know how to best strengthen families. So our commitment to you is that the priorities and needs that you identify will be those that the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, this cradle or even prenatal-to-career pipeline, will provide in support of strengthening families. And we will only declare success when you declare success. When you are convinced that this work is actually changing things for the better, is ensuring better outcomes for children and families, and ultimately contributes to the goals that we are seeking for workforce development and for societal well-being across these communities so that this effort can serve as a model for Hartford as a whole, and Hartford can serve, hopefully, as a model for Connecticut as a whole. So next, oh, go, yes. So here is, and you've already heard this from the mayor and from Courtney, this is what this grant is all about. Building an integrated and coordinated pipeline of services and supports with the community that helps children and families reach their full potential. We have the experience with our partners to do this. Our success will be dependent upon the extent to which you partner with us. We need your critical input, we need your feedback, we need your criticism, we need your guidance. And ultimately, we need you to declare whether we are successful or not. We're committed to that. So we look forward to many meetings of this sort to both secure your input as well as determine how well we are or are not doing. Hopefully, we will be doing well. So with that, I'm passing it over to Jacqueline or Courtney. So Jacqueline Rose, who leads the innovation work in our office, was the, really, the prime chef and cook for pulling all of this together. Jacqueline took the lead in grant development. She took the lead in engaging our partners. And she is now taking the lead in navigating us through this grant implementation process, which, as the mayor said, begins with twelve to eighteen months of planning because we can't determine in isolation exactly what this should look like. So she's the perfect person to do a little bit of a deeper dive into the grant. Jacqueline?
Hello, everyone. It's so great to be here with you today. Again, my name is Jacqueline Rose. I work within the Office for Community Child Health. I'm a public health practitioner by training, but most of my work has really focused on what are the best strategies to partner with communities and how can we innovate with communities? So I'm going to tag team a few slides with Courtney, and then Courtney, excuse me, and then we will open it up for questions and conversation after this. So as we've said, the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline is really a place-based initiative that integrates achievement-oriented schools and vital evidence-based social and community service within a networked prenatal-through-career pipeline. And our first step in understanding what to include in that pipeline was to inventory the existing assets and infrastructure within the community. So we know that there's a number of different services that folks are already engaged. We want to understand, from your perspective, what are the best of those services? And how can we elevate them and make them more available? The concept of a pipeline is probably the most concrete aspect of this work. The rest of it is really about how we engage families and how we prioritize their needs, as is outlined in the next few concentric circles on the slide. Courtney and I have been talking a lot about parent and family engagement, as well as how do we create a community-driven agenda? Again, as Paul said, none of this is going to work if we don't partner with the community in a way that makes sense. And we're still trying to figure out the best language to use to describe this work. But the core of this is, we want this to be owned and driven by the community, and we view ourselves as a vehicle to make that happen. Connecticut Children's serving as the lead applicant was a way for the city of Hartford to leverage the infrastructure that Connecticut Children's has and the experience that Connecticut Children's has putting together federal grant applications. We really view this as an opportunity to partner with the community in a way that elevates your priorities. Underpinning all of this is not just prioritizing family concerns and needs, but really thinking about how we can elevate the strengths that families already have. As we said, that there's a number of existing assets and infrastructures within the community and within families. We want to be sure to elevate those and make those the focus of the interventions that we are designing. And perhaps most important in understanding our impact is the data collection and analysis. And this is one of the things I'm probably most excited about within this grant because we need to be able to partner with you to design it, but then also partner with you to understand the impact that it's having on the community. And we brought some great partners to the table to be able to do that evaluation and that assessment. However, even though we can look at the research and say, this is what a meaningful indicator is according to the literature we're looking at, what really matters is what you're interested in changing in your community and building those evaluation priorities into the design of what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this, and again, while we were putting things together, the idea was really making it so that it's driven by the individual. So an example might be if there's two separate organizations and you, it could be a young woman with a kid. The kid could be at Organization A doing after-school programming. And that mother might need some help applying to jobs or going into college. Now, we have two organizations that might provide that service. That mother, what would make sense to her is to go to the same place where her kid is already receiving services. So by us not sitting there saying, this is how you go, this is the pathway, by providing, it's going to give opportunities, again, to do what's best for that individual and their family. So again, that's our goal. And as has been said before, we haven't figured that out a hundred percent yet because we need the information from individuals. How do we take that thought and operationalize it? So that's what we're going to be doing for the next year or so. So, so I know we were talking about going to questions, and after this, I think we have two more, two more slides here. But just to be clear, the folks online will call on your name when we go to questioning. And then we'll also, before that, we'll have people here in the crowd give yourself an opportunity to answer some questions. So parent, family, and community-driven agenda. And that's something that we've been harping on this entire conversation. I really think we, as a community, should really look at this opportunity for us to redefine what community is. It's not just residents, it's not just community-based organizations, it's not just a faith-based community, it's not just a city. I think by us being able to have this structure around where we can have authentic conversation and meaningful conversations, working towards a common goal, we can redefine what community is, and it should be all of us and not just us broken up in different segments. So I'm really excited about that. I'm also excited about different opportunities this grant presents. There will be some positions that'll be hired for. The goal is to hire people from the community. Because again, if it starts with the community, the ideas for all of this stuff, community to residents to be a part of every level of the process. So the advisory, the planning, how do we communicate the marketing of it? That's a big piece because marketing has changed. In the past, we could put up a couple flyers, but because of COVID restrictions and how the world has changed a little bit, communication has completely changed. So we need to know, how do we get the information to individuals within the community? And we only do that by, you know, authentic engagement. And not, again, not just residents also, our community-based organizations who are doing the work. You guys have the expertise, you guys have the boots on the ground. We're going to lean on that to help try to figure this thing out, and super excited about it. Anything you think I should have? All right.
I got fancy with my PowerPoint skills. So when we think about what the pipeline consists of and when we had to do the inventory of existing assets and infrastructure within the community, we had to identify domains that aligned with the Department of Education. So there are three domains, early care, education and learning, primary and secondary education, and then post-secondary education, training, and career development. They're really more focused on the different stages of young people that we could be engaging. The final two domains that we The final two domains that we identified are health, safety and well-being, and then resident and community leadership and system building. And those domains really cut across all three of the different stages of the life course we identified before, as well as into adulthood and thinking about how we support our older citizens in the community. The one thing I want to make sure we're clear on, you know, we've said it a few times, is resident and community engagement is driving this work. And just because it's in a separate bucket on the slide doesn't mean it isn't intertwined into everything that we're already doing or that we plan on doing. We need input, your voice and your perspective in order to think about how we operationalize services within each of these domains. And perhaps more importantly, how do we make them universally accessible to everyone in the community while also working to identify those kiddos and families that are at the most risk and make sure that we ensure that they have access to this pipeline?
So I'll be very brief because we do want to get on to the discussion with you. But I was asked just to spend a moment or two talking about evaluation. And I'm happy to do that because I think, in fact, it was probably one of the strongest portions of our grant and likely and undoubtedly contributed to our success. And also because we have our evaluators here. Our evaluation team includes the University of Hartford's Center for Social Research, the Hartford Data Collaborative and Data Haven. And they very generously come together and figured out how we can do this in a coordinated, integrated way. I've already mentioned to you that the most important outcomes will be those that you determine. And in fact, built into the evaluation is a survey, our surveys of the community, residents, families, to let us know how we are doing. And our ultimate goals are obviously long-term goals that will be reflective of academic success, occupational success, and other evidence of well-being. So we've asked ourselves the question, how in the short term will we be able to answer the question, how are we doing? Are we on the right track? And again, we've got to rely upon you, the community, to be able to answer that question. But we also need a methodology. And a methodology that we have favored over the years in determining our success at strengthening families to promote their children's optimal health development and well-being over the short term is to look at the extent to which we can document family strengthening. So we've embraced an approach that is called the Protective Factors Framework, developed by a think tank in Washington DC called the Center for, the Center for the Study of Social Research. And the, there are five key principles here that we know determine whether a family has the capacity to achieve the best outcomes they are seeking for their children. And we also know how to measure these five factors. So we will, through, over the course of this grant, over the short term and the long term, measure the impact that we are having on families' resilience, the capacity to deal with adverse circumstances and adverse events, the capacity of families to promote their children's social and emotional well-being and competence, family's social connections, or the social connections there that enable families to thrive, family's access to concrete support in times of need, are they able to turn to resources when they are critically important, and family's understanding of their child's development and their parenting behaviors and parenting practices? We know how to measure these things. We will be measuring these things. And it's an optimal way for us to hear from you, the families and the residents, how well we are doing in strengthening them. If we don't see a positive trajectory, we have to question what we're doing and enhance what we are doing in order to get a greater effect. We pledge to be transparent about this. We will share this with you. And we pledge to be accountable. We must be successful, and you will ultimately be the judge.
So just to wrap up, where are we right now? And our goal over the next few months is to develop a plan so that we can successfully launch on January 1st, keeping in mind that the first 12 to 18 months of the grant are dedicated to planning. Some of the things that we're going to focus on in the months leading up to January 1st is inventorying who we identified as partners in the grant application and figuring out where we have gaps, and then developing processes to engage other organizations serving the community that need to have a role in the pipeline. It will be important, as Courtney highlighted earlier, we do have a set of results and performance measures that we are accountable to the Department of Education. So any partners that we bring on, we will ask that they identify which measure or which result they think that they can best align with so that we can ensure that everything that we're building in aligns with our ultimate goals for this grant.
Excellent, thank you. So I guess we have someone online that has a question first. Michael Orata, if I'm butchering your name, I apologize. But please, so he can ask a question.
Can I apologize, Courtney? I'm just going to just jump in before we, as we now transition into questions. I want to say again, thank you, Courtney, Dr. Bronin, Jaclyn, for their work in putting this together. And, you know, I just wanted to say one other thing, which is, look, I think one of the, one of the strengths in Hartford, which we're really blessed by, is that we've got a lot of great organizations doing important work, right? And we could all name a dozen organizations that have been working in our city for a long time. Each of them do important work. That's great. I think if we're being honest with ourselves, we would also say that all too often, they're each working in their own little silo. Right? I mean, how many people do we know who are working with four, or five, six different organizations who aren't necessarily even talking to each other? And so we don't even necessarily know, one organization is providing support to a kid, doesn't know that this other organization is supporting that child's, you know, mother or brother. And the opportunity to try to bring that together and support that work over a period of time so that we can use that blessing of all those great organizations, but do it in a more effective, coordinated way. I always, I think about some of the young people that we've lost in our city. And I think about a number of them who were not totally disconnected. They were actually working with a variety of different groups. But a lot of those groups weren't talking to each other. And so when those young people fell through a crack, nobody really realized it. So I just wanted to come back to that because in some ways, I think that's a really important piece of the work here. It's saying, all of these partners who care, who do good work, we all know we can coordinate that better together. And we know that kids need us to do that. So I just wanted to kind of segue with that. And why don't we open it up for questions now? Sounds like Michael Orata is first up online. Maybe we'll kind of bounce back and forth online and in the room and go from there. So, Michael?
Hey, and thank you, Mayor Bronin. Just for a little background, because I don't have a lot of time. My name is Michael Orata. I'm the president of Black Lives Matter, ASICSO, born and raised in the city. And, you know, I put a lot of the things that I wanted to talk about in the chat, but I definitely wanted to just reiterate what I put in the chat. I believe that, you know, all of these, the things that you guys are saying are great. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to get this information out to the community. And I just, I just want to say that I think that a few programs that I had growing up that made me to, made me the person that I am today would be excellent for children to experience now, maybe even better programs than what I received as a kid. Programs like Success for All and after-school programs that kept me, you know, from being out on the street. I think those things are really important because unfortunately, we have, we have a system that doesn't really allow for parents to be there 100% for their kids. And I'm not really a big fan of the victim blaming. You know what I mean? We have an economic system that, that we have parents working two to three jobs, and they're unable to really spend a lot of time with their kids. So we do need programs. We do need things to help bolster, you know, reading and writing capabilities, the same way that I had when I was a kid. And be, and another thing, we already know that Biden is fighting for universal early child, early childhood education when it comes to pre-K. But what a lot of people don't understand is that birth to, birth to three are also really, really crucial times in a child's life. I taught preschool and pre-kindergarten for two years. And I feel like not a lot of people understand how important these years are. So I think we need to make that extra push to include some sort of funding on a state, or whether it be state or city level, to ensure that our children are being taken care of while parents are hard at work. And this is not to take away a parent's right to, you know, be with their children and raise their children, but it's to rather support parents who are struggling to survive right now whilst raising their children at the same time. Because in a lot of cases, what we see is a lot of parents who are blamed at being absent when in reality, they do not have the means to be there. They do not have the means to be there physically for their children because oppression has made it very complicated, has made it very difficult for them to be there for their children. So I think these are multi-faceted issues that we need to look at. And, you know, unfortunately, with this, we won't be able to solve the, the issues of the economic disparities that occur in the black community. But we'll be at least able to support the parents until we find solutions to do that. So I think it's really important for us to consider these factors. We need the before-school programs where children come in and they, and they learn how to read, the same thing that I did when I was a kid in Hartford. I went to Rosson Elementary School. It made an entire, a humongous difference in my life. And the after-school programs, whether that be at the school or we need to start reopening some of these recreation centers that I had when I was growing up. I remember going to Six Flags for the first time in my, in my life with, with, with the Hartford Rec Center right there on Tower Avenue. First time in my life I ever got to experience anything like that, you know? A lot of kids don't get that opportunity these days. And I feel like we don't want to let these kids fall through the cracks. So we got to take care of them. Unfortunately, I got to go. I got a meeting with the Green Party. So I will see you guys later. Keep up everything you're doing. Thanks again, Mayor Brona, for your words. Thank you, everybody on the panel. Please take what I'm saying, please, because I know this from experience, okay? I grew up in Hartford. I'm born and raised. I know what it's like. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for joining and for the question. Figured out where to stand. Real quick on that. In a lot of ways, it could be that our timing is good because if some of the legislation that President Biden is pushing down in Washington gets passed, it may create some more opportunities to do more. And being able to do this work together may help us identify what are some of those big things that we can go after to incorporate into this? Michael's right. And there's big pieces of childcare, free community college, you know, a whole bunch of other supports, and also potential other grants, other resources that we could go after. So it could be that we can go after this. The other thing is, this is kind of taken off from where Michael said, look, nobody should come out of this meeting thinking that anybody here thinks that $6 million a year is going to solve the problem, right? That's not how this, that's not how this works. What this does give us a chance to do is try to marshal all the resources that are out there. And if that means making some changes in our rec department, if that means making, you know, bringing in different partners, whatever it is, this is our chance to figure that out. So I think, Michael, you're thinking about it in the right way. Now, while we go to the room and see if anybody who is here has a question or comment. Yes, Ms. Nixon?
Good evening. I really welcome this opportunity because living in the promise zone ever since I've been in Hartford, just about all my life, okay, all my life. And this is something that's, we really, really, this particular program here is long overdue. I mean, it just that, it seemed to me, there's a lot of money coming into our neighborhood, but it's not really solving the problem. And because we've been hitting and missing, we have all these different programs, people from all over, but we are not really, really, really talking together. And that's why I like this particular program because now we can, we can look at it, we can evaluate what we're going to do. You know, we're going to go through the plans, and we're going to come up with what we want, some results. And then I'm looking forward to the evaluation at the end. But we're going to say, who knows better than people that really live in the promise zone, okay? Like myself and a lot more probably in the room, okay? So we know what we need. So we know what we need, and money comes in, but it's so many different organizations that's all over the place. And there's no connection. And that's why our, our kids are falling through the cracks. Even my grandson, we just lost him about three years ago, okay? Good kid, in college, going to school, getting ready to be a fireman. Excellent kid. But what happened? We got all these programs and, but there's no way that we're connected. The money is coming, but, but we have no way of measuring what our results, what we, what we really, really want, and then look at that on a whole and see if there was a success. So this particular program, I'm looking forward to it because I'm looking forward to see some real results after these four or five years. I don't want to go to another 10 years and say the same thing. But here we can hold people accountable. So what happened? Hold people accountable. And I like the idea. We really need to look at measuring, measuring, going to have to prioritize. And how are we going to go about? We need to pick so many families, from the baby, from the time they're born to the time they get out of school, and follow that family through. And that's how you're going to be able to come up with the result. And then if something happened in that family, all these different, this particular, what we're doing there, we're able to point a finger to what really happened, the reason that kid fell through the crack. So that shouldn't fall, it shouldn't fall through the crack because we got all these different organizations, got all this money, and we work together and talk to each other, and it can work. So I'm looking forward to seeing some good results, okay? I'm looking forward to working on whatever team. As long as I'm here, I want to be a part of this because I want this to be one of my legacies when I leave here.
Ms. Nixon, just a quick comment. When you were talking about the importance of you and the community determining the success, really leading, providing the evaluation data, I was really relieved to see just down the hall, Wes Yount, Wes, raise your hand, who leads the evaluation at the Center for the, Center for Social Research at the University of Hartford, vigorously shaking his head, yes. So he agrees with you. That's good.
Fantastic. Thank you.
This is Bethany. Take you back on this next, and what you were saying. I agree with everything.
Not sure what, what happened there, but what? We're going to try to bounce back and, back and forth. I think Antonio Edwards was the next, had the next question or comment from online. Antonio?
Mayor Bronin, how are you? Thank you, distinguished panel and everybody who's participating. My name's Antonia Edwards, and I do several things. I sit on several boards, Children's Behavioral Advisory Board. I'm also a part of Connecticut Council for Development Disabilities. I do a lot in the community with regards to being a family advocate and also a community activist. I'm just really impressed and pleased that we were able to have this separate funding that's available for the community. One of the things that I'd like to suggest, and it's only because this has recently been reported by CCMC, is the overabundance of children with behavioral health issues in the emergency rooms. I think that CCMC reports that there's like 20 children a day. Yale says that there's 50 to 60. And what I'd like to suggest that is that we can possibly do or invest in a walk-in urgent care behavioral health facility, the standalone from the emergency room that focuses on the issues with children's behavioral health. I think that a lot of it stems from children who have any issues in school, also the community violence. And I think we really need to focus on that. I had a situation last year where I lost a grandson, eight years old, due to mental health and not being taken seriously. I think that we should focus a lot on the training for the staff for being culturally competent with regards to the different diversities and people's backgrounds. And I just think that this is a perfect time. It's not only planned it because we already knew that this part exists. So it's not really difficult to put this together, but to also invest in making this happen. I think that the funding can also be transferred over, like Michael said and Ms. Nixon said, to the community to provide resources, to open up these rec centers, to give children things to do. And I just think it's a real appropriate time. and I really like to be a part of it. And I think that it makes a big difference in the community. And I think we really need to invest in our children. And I like to just make that suggestion. Thank you for listening, and thank you.
So much, Ms. Edwards, and thank you for your comment, and so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
I think you'll find a lot of agreement here about the comments that you made. Dr. Dwork, it looks like you had some thoughts.
I was just going to, just to emphasize the critical importance and the accuracy of the comments. Many of you are probably aware that the behavioral health crisis affecting our children and youth has now been declared by many organizations a public health emergency. And we're fortunate to, again, be partnering with behavioral health experts in the room with us as part of this pipeline. And I can assure you that some of the solutions, or at least some of the responses, were in fact discussed today at a town hall meeting at Connecticut Children's, because we're at the center of the storm, which you probably heard or read about in The Current. The point I want to make, though, is that if we are successful with this initiative, we're going upstream in hopefully allowing us to avoid this crisis in the future. If we are successful in strengthening families, we know that if families are stronger and resilient, that directly correlates with the mental health outcomes for their children. So we have to do whatever we can to deal with the acute crisis of the moment. It's terrible. But we also need to simultaneously be thinking forward, upstream, in advance, to ensure that this isn't a problem that is repeated year after year after year. And I'll just make one final comment. In the aftermath of the horror of Sandy Hook, when President Obama declared that we needed to take on the issue of behavioral health challenges for children, I was doing my rounds through our emergency department and saw the number of children way back then who were in the emergency department in behavioral health crisis because they had nowhere else to go. And actually, I wrote an op-ed that was published in The Current. I reread it recently, because we've had surges of 40-plus children stuck in the ED with no place to go. When I wrote that article, that op-ed, I was horrified by the fact that we had 15 children in the emergency department in behavioral health crisis. Today, we would celebrate that number, unfortunately. So we need to deal with this issue acutely, but we also need to deal with it upstream. And that's what this, that's what this work is designed to do, both.
Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Edwards. I think, I think Ms. Jennings, Cynthia Jennings, has the mic in the room.
Yes, thank you. My name is Cynthia Jennings, and I am civil rights attorney and environmental attorney. And I also spent six years on the Hartford City Council. I'd like to say that, first of all, if we're going to have families that are well-developed, and I thank you, Antonia, for your comments about the children. If we're going to have well-developed families, we have to focus on home ownership opportunities for our families to live in communities where their children can thrive and flourish, and they can have neighbors that can actually love them, okay? Number two, we have to have economic engines that actually contribute to the success of our families. We need to support local developers, local minority contractors, in developing these home ownership opportunities for our children and our families, and make sure that we're not just talking about putting them in apartments. We're talking about putting them in their own homes where they can be trained and nurtured and can have an opportunity for a normal life. You cannot move a child around 15 different times to 15 different schools and think that they're going to function normally. They are not, okay? Number three, we need to build a children's hospital in the promise zone, not just talk about taking the money out of the promise zone down to the children's hospital. We need a children's hospital in the promise zone right here in this community where our children can get services. And we need to hire people that look like our children and speak the same language and cultural experience that our children have. So it's important that we do that. We need economic engines that will actually provide support for our families, for our children. So when we talk about home ownership, that also means bringing the contractors in to develop those buildings, to develop the, we need people to come in with the financial resources to make sure our parents can afford to live there. And just like we spend billions of dollars as taxpayers in this city supporting contractors and developers that don't even come from here, we need to support our own. So I think that, I think when we talk about evaluating, let's evaluate things based on these items. Also, I've worked with, I worked with the Connecticut Coalition for Environmental Justice for a number of environmental organizations. And we fought the landfill that was out there that was smelling up this community and making people sick. You've heard from Helen Nixon. She started an organization called Survivors on Sunset Street. Why? Because there were, every black man on Sunset Street was dead from cancer, but two of the two that were there had cancer. So when you're talking about keeping a community safe, we need to also control what goes into our, around our communities. We have to fight environmental racism, just like we fight every other issue that comes towards our community. And we cannot allow that, because now when we talk about COVID hitting us, and you have an incinerator down on the other end of town, you have an incinerator that's already, young people and older people whose lungs are already compromised. When COVID hits, we lose 12 to, nine to 12 times as many people to death from COVID because their lungs are already compromised. So when you're talking about families being whole, let's talk about making sure that we are not exposed to environmental poisons for years and years and years, and nothing is done about them. We had 70 towns plus New York City dumping garbage in our landfill, and now they're burning it in the other end of town. So we have to recognize that this leads to a premature death of all of our people. We have the highest death rate of our seniors in this city, in the whole state. So more people die at an earlier age in Hartford, Connecticut, than they do in any other place in the state. And 20 miles away from us, not even 20 miles away, the life expectancy is 20 years longer. And it has to do with environmental toxins. So let's talk about the reality of when we want to talk about what's good for this community, let's start with making sure that we're dealing with economic engines that will build wealth in our communities, and making sure that our children have an opportunity to have a healthy, safe life, as well as our seniors and everyone else living here. And we thank you for your efforts, but I can tell you from living here over 40 years in the promise zone and in the city of Hartford, that it is not easy being in Hartford and remaining healthy, okay? So the first thing we ask that Hartford Hospital, I'm sorry, Children's Hospital would do is build a children's hospital in our community where our children can have their needs met. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Jennings. Just on two of those points, again, you'll agree with a lot, if not all, of what you said. To those points, as you know, we've been working hard to get that trash plant shut down. And it will soon be shut down. It will soon stop burning trash. The next question is, what's the next generation of waste disposal, right? That's a really important environmental issue, it's a really important health issue. So we're working hard on that. But I just want you to know that not too long from now, that facility is no longer going to be burning trash. And couldn't agree more about your home ownership points. You know, that is absolutely critical. So I also want to say, we're going to have, just like we'll have many more conversations about this, we're going to have some focused conversations on economic development, neighborhood by neighborhood in the months ahead, including focus on northeast Clay Arsenal and Upper Albany. So we'll have some dedicated conversations on those points, too. On the, who do we, John Thomas.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
We got you, John.
Yeah, I just want to ask, CCMC, you know, I'm very familiar with the work they did in the early 2000s. I was working for the Hartford Inquirer, and I did a story on the urban pathology of urban violence. So CCMC did some really great work identifying that, defining it, and making it something real. And I'm wondering if, because it's kind of like, sounds the same, you know? NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, had some guidelines through the federal government that said that if you're going to take care of kids that are going through mental health issues, you got to take care of the whole family. So I kind of see an alignment here with that. And I'm wondering if we're going to take some of our learnings from the past, as well as the city of Hartford. We had the Martin Luther King Foundation that had Club Co-op, had the recreation, the parks and recs were very much involved in creating relationships with these youth on the street. And you know, what I mean to say is, I've been here all my life as well, and I've seen things work much better in the past with some funding. And we had paralegals in the school. You know, you had people from the community working in the school who knew these kids, who knew how to speak their language, who were making paychecks, and actually creating much more positive outcomes in the classroom, because these kids knew that they had to hold themselves accountable to the people that were in their class, from their community. I'm just wondering, you know, what kind of opportunities could we revisit that worked in the past? Also, you know, I come from Community Solutions. We don't do direct services. So I'm wondering if there's room for organizations like my own who like, hey, if we want to have a, maybe a study hall at Swift, you know? Maybe that space right there could serve a benefit for this effort, but maybe not through the traditional direct service approach that I think that much of this involves. That's it.
Thank you very much, John. A couple of quick comments, is that okay, Mayor? Number one, thank you for the shout-out for past work in violence prevention. And I just want to note, Kevin, would you raise your hand? Kevin Borup, who heads our Injury Prevention Center at Connecticut Children's, is here. And there, his work and the work of his center is a part of this grant work. And you will hear more about that. In addition, I don't know whether, Thea, the mayor, give me a clue as to whether I should reference the, your efforts to engage us and the city's other two hospitals. Now that I'm saying it, I'm just looking for it, either shake my head yes or go. So the city has engaged Kevin and our Injury Prevention Center in developing a hospital collaborative bio-intervention project. And there's been a lot of work done in the very recent past to best engage with Trinity St. Francis and Hartford Hospital. And I think it's safe to say you will shortly hear the, what is being proposed for that work. But it's a comprehensive, integrated approach in which we're trying to bring together the expertise across all three of the organizations to, again, have a citywide impact. So I just wanted to reference that. And there was one other point that you made, John, that also I wanted to reference. And now I can't remember what it was. I apologize.
Was it the Martin Luther King Foundation? Or, you know, there's a
I recall, sorry. Just today, we engaged with Community Solutions and began to explore how we could best partner in this work and what, how Community Solutions can be a resource to strengthen the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline. So those conversations have begun and will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dwork. Thank you, Mayor. Nice, John. All right, yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tyler Johnson. I am one of the pillars of Act Up Theater. We are located in inner city of Hartford, and we just want to make sure that we are a part of this conversation. So our mission statement is to mobilize the power of the arts to promote social justice activism within our community. Act Up Theater is located in the inner city of Hartford. We were at Noah Webster, Simpson Waverly when it was there, Kinsella, Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts. Hartford is full of talent. What connects families more than the arts? Think about it. Music, you know, poetry, expression, dance. This is all that, all that connects us on a daily basis, right? We need to make sure we give a voice to the voiceless. We are still experiencing a global pandemic. We are engaging with racial injustice, made more visible with the George Floyd deaths and the recent protests across the globe. In times of crisis, we need humanity, expression, and the community that the arts create. Arts addresses the trauma that we are all speaking about. We want to make sure the arts are a part of this conversation. At Act Up Theater, we serve 80-plus participants in 30-plus schools in Hartford and surrounding towns. The relationship of our participants and families involved is completely extraordinary. When we have our shows, we have full families involved. And if you've seen one of our shows, you see moms, daughters, grandparents. Everybody is involved, where we create a community, which also improves relationships, improves communications, blends families. And we're also a family company. Many of you guys might know my mom, Faithlyn Johnson, and my sister, Priestley Johnson, who is also amazing, and we are a force to be reckoned with. And we are a part of this conversation, and we will make sure that we are here. Arts gives the voice to the often silent, and we must speak the language and reach the children in the way that connects to them the most. Through music, expression, and writing, and poetry, creative writing, you get to understand the actual feelings of these kids nowadays. When we did a short, we had a short little lesson over the summer at our ATAA, which is our intensive training academy for the arts. Many students talked about the trauma that they've experienced from policing and also their fear. And that is something that we have to address, because it's not just coming from the student, it's coming from the family. At Act Up Theater, we try to provide as many opportunities as we can to get the entire family involved. Myself, I have traveled far and wide. I went to Florida, Chicago. I have my degree in recording arts engineering, and I came right back home, which is Hartford. I want to provide opportunities, not just for males, but for females in the technology field that we can make sure has the opportunity to be a part of sound, lights, digital media, film, all the things that they are all interested in. They can't stay off of these things with the TikTok, can they? No, not at all. So we want to make sure that those skills on TikTok that they're doing is actually editing, video editing, which you can get paid for, which is something if they're interested in, put them in a program that highlights that, which also relates to the connectivity that everybody's talking about. Internships, mentorships. At Act Up Theater, we completely thrive on these points, because we know it's 100% important to make sure that you're connecting and also staying connected with each one of your students. And right now, with this plan, we just want to make sure that everyone in the room knows that the arts are here. We are willing to be a part of this conversation in any way. And remember, what connects most of us? If you play a Marvin Gaye song, we're all going to start jamming. We have to make sure that we are relating to the students in the best way possible. And sometimes, and especially now, it's not traditional. You have to be able to speak the language. You have to be able to come down and speak, and speak in any which way to get to them at any point. And I want to make sure that that is prevalent, as well as everyone knows that at Act Up Theater, we stand with Hartford youth. Where do you stand? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think anybody who's seen an act of performance knows exactly what you're talking about. And you really do incredible work. And agree that the arts is a hugely important part of a healthy community and making sure that we've got healthy kids. We have online.
Sherri.
Sherri. Sherri, you're up online.
Thank you. I have a question, or I have a statement. You don't know who I am. My name is Sherri Frazier. I have four degrees, economic, marketing, special education, and counseling psychology. I'm a product of I'm a product of Hartford. I uh, was born and raised here. I went to school here. The point I wanna make is this, okay? I worked for a um, Northeast Utilities for a number of years. And I'm all, and I was accustomed to always looking at numbers first. You wanna look at the numbers in your community? You wanna say, and then you determine what your community needs. Okay, I grew up in a single um, parent household. Okay, in the city of Hartford right now, um, there's a number of single family household. Okay, where the mothers do not know how to manage money, manage time, manage their families. Okay, as well as make sure their kids are well educated. Okay, and when we sit here and we look at the numbers, and please note, um, because I was great, raised in that type of environment with a mother similar to that, my grandmother stepped in. And she basically set the tone and made sure that we knew where to get certain resources within our community. And because she wanted a, wanted her grandchildren's to shine. Uh, what I'm basically saying is this. Uh, we need to look at the data. We need to, to figure out, well, okay, when we look in our school system, why is our school system made up of not people that don't look like them? Okay, um, uh, if you have more people looking like them, that would improve um, some of the um, social and emotional problems that they're dealing with because that were built up their self-esteem and they'll want to learn more and be more willing to participate. What I'm saying um, to the group as a whole, I hear the organizations that you're working with, but I just um, kinda wanna make sure that um, you're focused on what um, this generation needs, the previous generation needs, and the upcoming generation's needs are. Because you can't take care of one without taking care of the other. Are, uh, am I clear?
Thank you, Sheri.
Uh, am I clear? Did everybody understand what I, the point I was trying to make?
Yes, ma'am.
That is very important.
Yes, ma'am's around the room.
Okay, that's very important that your organization looks at the community as a whole and address the individuals within that community. And remember that the majority of these um, individuals in the community um, don't possess certain skills that are needed. And how are you gonna get the, the skills um, in the community?
All right, thank you very much, Sheri. Come uh, come back to the room. Uh, we've got a question or comment over here.
Good evening, how you guys doing? Uh, my name is Langley Giles, I'm a plumber, city of Hartford. Uh, representative of the Giles family on the north end. Um, just trying to figure out what can we do about uh, getting some tools in these kids' hands? Um, I've learned that um, this is the education that no one can take away from me. Like even in the height of the pandemic, people losing jobs, we, we found no hiccups in work. I've been outside since they said go inside. Uh, I believe we do need to get these kids some trades because, I mean, I can pack my truck up and move anywhere USA like today and find work. So uh, we wanna figure out about getting these kids some education and trade, in the trades. Um, it's kinda catch twenty-two because they give them the education, but they don't have the hands-on. So that's what I, I create jobs in Hartford. That's just plain and simple. We had a bunch of arguments downtown at the city. And I just asked the questions, like, how many jobs have you created? There was no answers. We create jobs, so um, would like to see some more focus on that. And um, some type of liaisons who are not scared to walk up to these boys on these corners. So if you scared to go outside, then it's not the job for you. Somebody like, really needs to walk outside. If you can't walk up to any of these boys on these corners, you've got a problem. If you can't relate to them, you've got a problem. That's, that's just what it is. It's the, it's the harsh reality. Everybody see it, you pass these corners and people getting shot and blase, blase. But if you're not, I'm not saying man enough or woman enough, but one of the problems is that. You have to be, you have to be able to stick your chest out and, and walk up to these folks as, outside. Not every, I mean, I've, I've been on both sides of the law. It's, you know, it, it, somebody's gotta go out there and talk to them. It's grown folks out there. And then there's young folks. I mean, they're like babies, running errands for somebody that's out there hustling or doing whatever. Most of these people have records and they can't get jobs or whatever the case may be. But something needs to be done about that, like somebody just, you, you, we can't just point and be like, yeah, that's them over there. Send the cops. And then the cops go over there and do, you know, whatever that they do. Somebody really needs to go have conversations with the kids of the city, with the adults of the cities, with these grown, grown, super grown men and women of the city. Because if you're not helping the adults, and we can help the kids all day long. They still go home to dire household situations. I mean, not to, uh, it sounds harsh, but if the kids are at the program all day, all right, you're gonna go home and smile? That household still has no food and is messed up over there. Wherever they going, it's, it's, I wanna swear, but it's messed up. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to keep it as busy as possible. Because people really need to understand that you gotta talk to these kids just as much as we need to get to the adults. The adults need it, they need the education, they need mental health help, they need everything. We can't just help out kids all day and then send them back home to a trash household. So that's it.
Ma- Mayor, this, this is Bethany, if I can inject her one second, I have
Yes, yes, Ms. Bethany, go ahead. Let me, I just, just real quick, this Mr. Giles, I just wanna say, I, I just wanna say, I, I, I think what you just said is really, really important. Every piece of what you just said is really important. Uh, agree a hundred percent, I think as does, you know, our team in the city about the trades. We're trying to build some stronger partnerships, especially with our community colleges, uh, to strengthen some of those pipelines um, into, into trades. And we'd love to talk with you a little bit about that. The other thing that, you know, this is probably the subject for another discussion rather than tonight, but, you know, we, we have also dedicated some resources to organizations that are out there doing anti-violence work, whether you're talking about, you know, peace builders as an example, right? I mean, the kinda work that, that Brother Carl has done for a long time. Um, one of the things we're also trying to build in partnership with many others is a pipeline to train some of those folks. Because it takes a number of things. It takes, what you said, the willingness to just go out there and engage honestly as a person who cares on the corners. It also takes a knowledge of what resources are out there. How do you, once you've gotten that engagement, once you've built that connection, what can you do to help actually open some doors for that person that you're engaging with to change? And we're trying to help build a stronger pipeline of folks who wanna do that work and training so that they can do that work, you know, powerfully and effectively. And we'd love to talk more with you about that, but you, go, go right ahead. Yeah.
The blighted property that's around the city of Hartford. That's the battleground for the education. I don't need a building that's, that's finished. I need the raggediest building in the whole city because I can, we can train and put the building together. We can put walls up and take them down and keep the classes going. What we're doing is creating apprentices. It's like, you know, we can't send everybody to Avon to do a service job if they listening to, you know, DMX, or their pants are down here, or they, you know, present themselves a certain way. And this is what we're teaching younger people. This is what I'm teaching older people. You can't go into different towns, let alone your own town and other people's houses, your elders or whomever, dignitaries, whoever. You can't go into folks' houses smelling like cigarettes or last night's drinking session. You can't do it. And this is what they're not teaching. We can create apprentices. I can't get someone licensed. I can get you the education, I can get you a bag of tools and show you what to do and what not to do. And then maybe bring in some of my friends who are business owners and present them. All right, listen, man, this is the cream of the crop apprentice here. Take them, and then it's on them after that to create the job. But we need more than that because just, just getting somebody the education and then just sending them off, it's not, it's not really, it's not really effective. In my, in my opinion, in my personal opinion from somebody who, you know, who's been there. So, I mean, I can go anywhere with this treatment. I don't know, I don't know about too many areas, but that's.
Thank you. The, the other thing I'd love to do is hook you up with our land bank. Because you talk about the blighted buildings. That's one of the things that we're trying to do is create opportunities for Hartford residents and for aspiring Hartford developers to take some of those buildings and bring them back to life by doing that work. So I'd love to introduce you to the land bank and see if there's some opportunities to do what you're talking about on exactly some of those buildings you're talking about. So, thank you for that. Um, Bethany.
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. I have a quick question for you. Now, it's a great art returning what they're doing with, with the children, but because I work with the youth and I'm out here and I see, and my biggest fear is that there's a lot of kids and families do not have access to the computers or even know how to use a computer. So how would they get this research or even know about these as a school program? And these jobs for them to go to? Because I really believe if they were like in the mail or posted somewhere, there would be more kids and families involved with these programs.
Thank you, Bethany. I think that's a, a really important point as well. I mean, as you know, um, during the pandemic, that was obviously a huge challenge for, for many kids. It was also an opportunity to get computers into the hands of a lot of kids and help uh, and hopefully accelerate some of that familiarity with that technology. But I think the answer, and you know, Dr. Dwork can jump in if you think that I'm off base here. But I think the answer is that part of the goal here is we don't want somebody to have to know how to find the resources to get the help. The point here is to make sure that you don't have to know how to navigate that. The team will find you. That the community together will help identify those who need that support and make sure you get connected to it so that you don't have to be uh, out there, you know, figuring out where to look. Is that fair?
That's real fair, but it's not fair, you know? Uh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm on, oh, hi, Sherman Bowens.
Go, go right ahead, Mr. Bowens.
Connecticut, CIA Community Improvement Association. And uh, I'm in the community all the time. And, and uh, the, the things with the community, reach out, or reach out, reach out to these people that don't know how to do computers, number one, through the mail system. I just learned just now that there's like, what'd you say, seventeen youth services uh, come uh, tonight? I couldn't believe it. Uh, uh, they're, they're not mar, there should be more better marketing in what they can, in what they do. You know, like, there should be a list of, yeah, if I need clothing, I need to go to these people over here. If I need uh, toothpaste, or, or, or if I need, if the girls need whatever they need, they need to go over to this program. I did not know this, and the only way to reach out to these people in my way that, 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 that you say, oh, you look it up online, it's in the chat, it's in this. No, the mail, the old mail system is the best way to reach out to our community, our community in the north. Now, youth, youth-wise, youth-wise, um, they on the corner, a lot of, a, a lot of the youth is hanging on the corner because they don't have no after-school jobs, okay? And if they was, if you, you, the program that, that, that you guys are talking about is great, welcome to Hartford. I love it. I listened to though, I never sit on this thing this long, my phone died. But I'll tell you this, I love the idea and I'd love to get and, 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 and give you some of my, my ideas of how I think your will be a success as well in the community. I'm on the corner, I'm on the block, as they say. John, John rides his motorcycle, he's on the block. He see what's going on. And the only way to get to the youth, in my, my idea, is the old-fashioned way. Here's a flyer and talk to them. This is what we doing. You tired of being on the block? You, you tired of, of getting your kids get killed? Your brother got shot? Well, here, here's eighteen programs and we got one, one other program that's coming in big that you, you can just get off this block and make some serious money. We got environmental ways you can make money. Learn how to garden, learn how to do this, you know? And uh, I, I welcome, I welcome, I, I, I lost my ideas because I threw away the paper, I got so mad. But, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak my mind, at least half of it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Bowens. When you find that paper, you can use the old-fashioned mail system and, and send it in. Uh, but no, seriously, appreciate your comments.
Hey, Mayor.
Hey, let's just, hang on, was that in the, let's come back to the room. Just I wanna make sure that we're being fair here. Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, Mayor Luke Bronin. Uh, my name is Bridget Prince, I'm a Hartford native. Um, I just wanted to start off with a comment that actually started the beginning of the session where we're talking about how all the teams came together. Um, not necessarily from the North End Promise Zone, but in order to receive this grant, you had to use the conditions in the North End Promise Zone in order to get the grant. And what I've seen for years, that has been the situation. People will come and use the devastations of the North End to receive money. And then after it's received, they're gone. Even what listening, excuse me, listening to this when you're saying, okay, we got this thirty million dollars, we're gonna divide it up six million dollars a year, but now we're gonna sit and do meetings and studies for the next twelve to eighteen months, which is gonna chip away from however many millions of dollars it's gonna take, excuse my throat, however many millions of dollars you're gonna use in that twelve, eighteen million, I mean, twelve to eighteen months. That's the first concern. You know, it took you however many years to do this grant, you got it. Now, we're talking for eighteen months, so what happens to that first six million dollars? How was that spent? So that's always the question. The other thing is, as far as the North End is concerned, would it be in the Promise Zone designation? And knowing that you have the opportunity, you have the tools, you have the resources to really be what Hartford once was. Hartford once was that community where blacks around the United States of America said, if I wanna be something, I wanna go to Hartford, Connecticut. That's what Hartford, Connecticut used to be. Hartford, Connecticut used to be the, the city where Martin Luther King Jr. rode up and down Main Street, where Malcolm X was at the mosque on Main Street, where Muhammad Ali was here often, and at the mosque with my father. You know, Hartford used to be that place. How it got to this point now, you know, is devastating. I'm in the room, where are all the elected officials from the North End of Hartford? Hello? Where are all the rest with the nice suits on? Where, where, where are the, where are all the officials? That's why you're here. You know, I mean, what happened? And I'm like, you know, Mayor Luke Bronin, you have the opportunity, which is right here, just where we're at right now, to be that city where, that urban, urban community where Mayor Lightfoot from Chicago says, let me call Mayor Luke Bronin and see how he got things going so well. You have that opportunity. When we have the resources, make it happen. I mean, that's, that's my position because we're here, we have an opportunity. There's things the community needs, the North End. Just like you have the Children's Hospital over in the South End, you have Childaroe Clinic, you have Hartford Hospital, you have all kind of healthcare systems in the South End, in the West End. You come down Main Street from the, the fork at Albany Avenue, all the way into Wilson, there's no place to go if you have a common cold. You, you know, and, and that's not fair to the community. So when you ask what the community needs, listen to what the community needs. You know, we're, the community's sick. And, 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 and just like you have to look at it the same way you look at wealthy suburban white people who are now strung out on opioids. That is a major health crisis. That's amazing how it's a major health crisis. That's amazing how it's a major health crisis. When a black person is on substance, it's criminal. When a white person is on substance, it's clinical. And you got millions of dollars coming to the community until you start looking at the urban community, the black community as humans, people who have humanitarian, you know, needs humanitarian efforts to heal, it'll be a different situation. But there's always going to be money coming into Hartford. There's always money coming here. Well, what happens to it? You ride through the North End, the North End doesn't look like any other area. Unipla is probably the worst looking place I've seen anywhere. Not just Hartford, anywhere. Unipla was the premier spot. Shirley Chisholm came and dedicated Unipla in 1972 as she was the first black woman running for the President of the United States. What happened to Hartford? You know, Mayor, like I said, Mayor Luke Bronin, you, you have the opportunity to really bring Hartford, bring this to Promise Zone to national prominence. And I'm hoping that you do that. So I have to keep on writing about it on Facebook. Thank you.
No, thank, thank you. And look, that's, that's our, that's, that's our goal. That's the goal. And, and just to this point about resources, I mean, Dr. Dwork can speak to this, I think, but even in terms of how the, the resources are out there, the focus is on getting as much as possible into the community. And what that means is into supports that will make the biggest difference for young people in the community. I also want to stress, and again, I talked about other meetings that we're going to be doing, so I won't spend too much time on this, but, but in, with some of the resources that we finally have to work with, right? Not, I'm not talking about this grant, but I'm talking about the, the ARP dollars, the federal dollars. We're not allowed to use those directly on economic development, but we are being creative in ways that use those monies to free up some other monies that we can invest in economic development. When I have some of those other discussions, we'll talk about some economic development stuff here, but I just, as an example, we've set aside $5 million for that Barbara Street corridor. And we've been trying over a period of years to help put the pieces in place so that when we had an opportunity, we can seize it. So as you know, you know, that's why we took the corner of Barbara and Westland and demolished that blighted building that was there. We took ownership of Old Snyder's and we're going to have to bring that down because it's, it's falling apart and can't be saved. But we're trying to lay the groundwork to make sure that we can build back up. And we have set aside some significant resources to help do that. Now, now 5 million won't get all that done, but hopefully it will help us make a, make an investment and leverage some private investment and, and other capital to help get that done. And there's other stuff in the neighborhood, but I, just since you mentioned Unipla, I wanted to share that with you. Yes, since we have, I don't know how many people we have online, but we've got a lot of people in the room, so I'm going to just stick in the room for a minute. Ms. Angela Harris.
Good evening. I would just like to follow those comments. My name is Angela. I'm the Chair of the Health Ministry right across the street at Phillips Metropolitan CME Church. And we have an entire office complex dedicated to health. It's called the Phillips Health Center at 2550 Main Street. We have family healthcare, family practice, medical practice, right in your neighborhood, right across the street. Okay, we have Hartford Behavioral Health that provides mental and behavioral health supports for families, adults and children. We have Hartford Communities That Care that deals with the, the trauma that we experience on a day-to-day basis in our neighborhood. We have Mothers United Against Violence and so on. There's several additional supports there for the community. We're here for the community. And I just would, would implore you to just stop next door when you're, you know, during the daytime and see the resources that are right here at your fingertips. My question to the team is, we talked about the anchors, the hospital as anchors. Another series of anchors that you have, I think it's like 250 some odd, are the, the faith community. Okay, and I would implore you to use these institutions for after-school programming. We have, when, when, you know, hopefully COVID won't keep us remote and hybrid for these years of this grant. But I would implore you to, to lean on these institutions during good times because oftentimes during bad times, we're called upon to fill in the gaps. And when you have this opportunity, I would hope that you would have folks at the table that can work with you to provide avenues to get some of your programming done.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to pass it over to you in a second, Dr. Dwork. And I just want to, I wanted to add on the one thing that you said, Angela, because I meant to say this about the, the health resources. You mentioned a few. You also got CHS on Albany Avenue. You've got Wheeler. You've got Inner Community up on Coventry. There are actually quite a few health assets, but I think that actually gets to a really important point, which is at the heart of what this is all about. Right? You have all those assets, but if they don't immediately come to mind for you or if they are not, you know, working in a coordinated way, then we're missing a huge opportunity, right? And I think that really gets to the heart of what this is all about. So I appreciate, you know, you, you giving that opportunity for us to, to highlight that. Dr. Dwork?
Well, the mayor just made the point and I, I just, Angela, thank you. And Angela has played a major role in formulating our thinking and our planning and will continue to do so throughout the implementation of this grant. So thank you. We, we could debate the merits of a hospi, of another children's hospital in, in the North End. But what I do want to emphasize is no one would debate the critical importance of access for all families and residents to healthcare. And the FQHCs that the mayor, excuse me, the federally qualified health centers that the mayor just referenced are all part of this initiative. And clearly, we have work to do in ensuring that you are confident in your access to those services. But the services are there. It's the access that's the problem. And secondly, we totally agree with regard to faith-based initiatives and faith-based organizations as we do with the importance of the arts and culture. And we, we use this depiction, our so-called flower diagram, in which we identify all of the sectors that we must call into play in developing this pipeline. And I can assure you that faith-based organizations and arts and, arts and culture are two of the prominent petals, if you will, in this flower diagram. So absolutely, yes.
Thanks, Dr. Dwork. And thanks, Angela. I, I want to, because we're going to do more of these meetings. I also want to make sure that people know they can participate this, in this and trust the timelines that we set out. So I think we set aside from six to eight for this meeting tonight. And I want to respect everybody's time by ending on time. But I also want to emphasize that that doesn't mean that this conversation's over. As we said at the start, it's just getting started. And also just want to say, when we say the conversation is just getting started, that doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of work that's going to happen at the same time as we, as we, you know, build, build this up as quickly as possible. So I want to say a huge thank you again to everybody for coming out, first of all, whether you were online or whether you were here at Parker. I also want to say again, a big thank you to Thea and to Courtney and to our team at Department of Families, Children, Youth and Recreation in the city. And another huge thank you to Dr. Dwork and to Jacqueline, to the team at Connecticut Children's for giving us this opportunity to build this together. So it's great to see everybody. Have a great, I, I'm sorry, I want to say one other thing, which is I, I don't want to ever miss the opportunity these days when we're talking about health and we're talking about all types of health, to just ask for your help in spreading the word in the community to everybody to get vaccinated. If there's one thing we could do that will help make sure, as Angela said, that we're not dealing with COVID for the next six years as we try to build this descent pipeline, it's by getting everybody vaccinated. So if you're not getting vaccinated and you have questions, call up right now. We'll make sure that we connect you to, you know, some folks who can talk with you. Faith right here is leading our, our vaccination efforts in, throughout the city. Faith, we need to stand up so everybody makes sure they know, it's not like, if you can't see, Faith's mask has a big faith written across, so she's hard to miss. But if you're not vaccinated and you have questions, please talk to Faith. If you are vaccinated and you know anybody who's not, please encourage them to do it. They're safe. They work. We've got to keep each other safe. So please, let's, let's do this and let's get this virus behind us so we can focus on this work, which is far more important. So thank you, everybody. God bless. Have a great night.